Okay, today's June 29th, 2016. The time is 10:04. I called the meeting in the Monongay County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. It's been a rough time for West Virginians in a lot of ways over the last few months. And with the flooding, it's just hard to imagine people that have lost absolutely everything. It's affected a lot of families throughout the state. The West Virginia Association of Counties, their executive assistant, Crystal, she and her 15-year-old daughter lost absolutely everything, even her pickup truck. She got a ride to work and she wasn't there, but her 15-year-old daughter, they had to rescue with a boat, which they did. And Kathy, the member services coordinator for the Association of Counties, her mother literally lost everything. And they're still counting the list of people we may know. There's some commissioners and other county officials that have lost everything in this, so we're still counting it. If you all keep all the struggles and hard times in your thoughts and prayers, we all very much appreciate the fortitude of West Virginians, but sometimes we need more help than even other people can give. But I know this is a very giving community. So if we can keep all that in mind as we rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have 10 exonerations this morning for 2,897.33. Several fiduciary matters this morning. Fiduciary orders from June 29th, 2016. Statement of services for fiduciary commissioner George Armistead. A petition to appoint Sheriff Kizner to administer the estate of William Franklin Perry. That probably want to deal with that separately.
Yes, please.
Okay. Minutes from the May 18th, May 25th, May 1st, meeting and work session, and also minutes for the election record book for May the 25th. General County vouchers, 136, 589.36. Chestnut Ridge Park, 800. Camp Muffley, 11,138.73. Justice Valuation, 396.18. Law enforcement forfeiture, 920. Teen Court, 11,271.78. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, 21,586.71. Room confinement, 6484.92. And Camp Muffley, 696.90. For a total of 189, 884.58. We have some budget revisions for the county clerk's office, county clerk elections, 701 Civil Process, and also for the prosecutor's office, that's count number 405. That's just to correct deficiencies in other lines, just transfer money in their budgets. Also, we have position vacancies for boards and authorities, Development Authority, Mon County Historic Landmarks Commission, the Planning Commission, Pleasant Valley PSD, Mon County Board of Health, and Camp Muffley, Chestnut Ridge Park, and Mason Dixon Park advisory boards.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have fiduciary matters. Which ones do you have there?
The only one that you need to deal with separately is the estate of William Franklin Perry. It's a petition, I believe, from the Ethics Commission.
Right, yes.
To appoint the sheriff.
Did we ever set a hearing date on that?
No, no, no. So if you need to set a hearing date, we can get you to do that today.
I read that the stuff, and I never saw a request for a hearing in there, but soon. You've got to have a hearing on this. The sheriff is here. He probably received a copy of it as well. I think our normal practice here has always been if someone files a petition like that, is set an exact hearing date and notify all the parties that the hearing would be held. Would you agree with that, Sheriff?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I think what all we do today is choose a hearing date. Do the two commissioners agree with that?
I agree. I was surprised we didn't have, yeah.
You didn't have an actual hearing date?
Usually Judy and I will talk about that ahead of time and go ahead and have a date in mind.
I know.
So I'm not prepared for that, but...
Should we leave it open ended that they said, you know, that you talked to Judy?
We can actually set it next week.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's do that.
Okay.
Move that we...
Well, I just table it till next week.
Okay, we'll table, okay.
No, move that you table.
Move that we table it till next week.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Now it's all official.
Okay.
There was also one other fiduciary matter that we settled sort of yesterday. Last week, we dealt with the estate of Arthur P. Scottschul.
Yes.
Keith Pappas had asked for a continuance.
Yes.
I was going to get them on a conference call today, but Judge Starcher is in a trial in Wheeling, and he wasn't going to be available. So I worked out a date, August 31st at 10:15. That's the date the two agreed on.
August 31st?
August 31st at 10:15.
Fine, fine by me. You want to set that hearing date?
Yes, sir.
Can we get a motion to set the hearing date?
Move for August 31st, set the hearing date.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Anything else in fiduciary matters?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. All right, this is time for comments from the public. If anyone in the public has anything they want to speak to, please rise and state your name, and you may speak to us. Once, twice. Hearing done. I will close the comments from the public session. Colleen Coon. Oops, she blocking her. We need her.
Sorry, again, you were behind me. It's okay.
That's all right. She has the football. You're just trying to keep her from getting the goal line.
So I have a couple requests for reimbursement. One is from the JJDP grant in the amount of $1,721.37.
Give me my blue pen because someone took mine. It's you.
I brought it for you just in case you needed it.
Yeah, I used to have one.
And then I have the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $1,104.49. I also have the Governor's Community Participation Grant for Arnetsville Community Association in the amount of $10,000, and then a certification of grant completion for that one as well.
We'll need, now this is a reimbursement?
Reimbursement, certification.
We need separate.
Completion, I think we'll separate that to a separate motion. Let's keep all the reimbursements together. That's okay. What, you got any more reimbursements?
No.
Move for reimbursement to be approved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we have a certification of completion on the Arnetsville project.
Move to sign the certification of grant completion, Arnetsville.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Is that the heating, cooling?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good.
It's all paid.
It's all paid.
All paid for.
That's great.
Okay, what else do we have?
I also have for the Edward Byrne Memorial Jet Grant, financial capability that needs signed.
Application.
Yes, and then disclosure of lobbying activities.
This isn't filled out.
It wasn't. They didn't print it. I'll have to go and redo it.
You want me to sign a blank document?
It must not have printed off.
I'm not trying to get my grandson from me.
No, I don't need a grand, I don't need a...
Yeah, she left it.
Okay.
I'll have to retry, I'll reprint it.
Move to allow the president...
Will you be able to print, will you be able to print this?
Yes, I will.
With my signature?
Mm-hmm. And then I have the disclosure of...
You can get your signature after.
Yeah, after, we can do it again. Move to allow the signature after it's printed again.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. This one's filled out. Disclosure of, yeah, yep. This is disclosure of lobbying activities. I think it's public knowledge that I...
Went down.
That I go after Congress and the state level, so...
We just don't use federal money for you to do that.
Oh, okay.
We don't use federal money to do that, that's all.
Okay. Move for approval that he can sign it.
Second.
That's all this is saying, saying that when I go down there, it's...
Right, it's not federal money.
Not federal money.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We're getting close. Oh, we're right on time.
Right on time.
Perfect. Okay, we've got a public hearing for petition to close, vacate, and abandon a portion of County Route 11931, also known as Surrey Drive. Anyone here on that? Please rise and give your name and address so she can have it for the record.
Well, Worcester Beach, 31 Swan Lane.
Are you going to present on this issue? I mean, talk about your petition and all, and about the road?
I can.
Okay, come on forward so we can get you on camera. Get you on camera. Are the people with you, you want to identify them? Are they, are they with you, all four of them?
My support staff. It's my wife, Pam.
Yeah, Pam, I know Pam. What's, what's her? You're not with them? Okay, all right. This is being, just to explain, it's normal practice that you verbally present, but we also like to do it because for the audience, the whole thing is being taped, and it's on YouTube, so you won't be able to watch yourself on YouTube. Now, don't be nervous about that. Just tell us what, basically what your petition says, so that people know.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking for about 100 by 100 portion of Surrey Drive being annulled. The reason is it's a neighborhood road. The portion I'm asking to be annulled has never been used as a road. And if it was opened, it would allow traffic to make a straight line through the neighborhood and on back to the main road. So it's never been used for that reason. It's never been gravelled, it's never been opened, and it borders my property on two sides of my, or that property in between. So we're just asking for that to be officially taken care of.
Now, that, you are the only property owner on both sides of this road?
On this portion, yes.
On the portion that you're seeking?
Yes.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none. Okay. Okay, just the follow-up. This was public, straight?
Yes. The documentation and everything was the neighboring properties, not necessarily touching the part that we're going to annul, have also been, they were also sent certified letters of the hearing today.
Okay, I just wanted to get all that on the record.
Yes.
So the certified letters were sent?
Yes, and we did receive a letter from the Department of Highways. You had asked for an updated letter because the other one was like 16 years old, so they did send that and everything, you know, we took care of all that, so.
Okay, I'd just like to get it all on the record that we have everything and it's all present.
I think you'd go the ascent of the other property owners anyway.
Right.
That are there, I mean, that are not adjacent but are there on Surrey Drive.
Yeah, here's all, here's all those. I just got to make sure everyone's, everyone's covered because you never wear, when someone's going to come out of the woodwork and say, "Oh, you didn't let me know," or if the DOH had plans for that, you don't want to go down that route. Want to finish it once and haven't done it before.
As you can see, all the neighbors signed it.
Yeah.
And said they were all in agreement. Actually, it came to me because it's in between my properties to finish it on, so everybody agreed to it.
What's the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve the petition.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. You got it, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
16 years later, you got it. We move slowly.
I must have, it was my fault and one neighbor. Who moved?
Who moved?
There you go. Okay, very good. Oh, we're right on time for the next one, too. Public hearing for fiscal year 2016 Justice Assistance Grant application. Renata?
Colleen.
Where's Colleen?
Ben went out to get her.
No, he was stuck. Colleen? Just explain what the grant's about, and then I'll ask Ren and Colleen.
It's, what they're wanting to purchase is a dryer and handguns and holsters for the grant.
A dryer?
Yeah, for evidence, duckless evidence drying cabinets.
Could I ask the sheriff what that is for us?
Sure. Basically, what we're talking about is a large stand-up apparatus that goes in the evidence room, and it's used for drying evidence that has liquid on it, blood, or any other kind of maybe materials that need to be dried and preserved for evidence. So this is a standalone unit that does that purpose. And then the other thing are 45 caliber Glock Model 21 handguns that we want to buy. We are, have been over the past several years transitioning all of our officers that carry guns to the Glock Model 21 so that we get into a situation where we're buying one ammunition for everybody so that we're not having to go out and purchase different types of ammunition at different types of prices and things, so, and then the holsters to go with those, which are the Level 3 security holsters that we buy for everybody.
Is there any matching funds with this grant?
There are not. I don't, I am going to look right here real quick.
Okay. I had a Colleen all say there's not. I just wanted to know whether there was.
Yeah, there is not.
Okay.
And a total grant is for $16,260.
And that will purchase everything you've just listed?
Yes, the weapons and the holsters will be about $5,000, and then the drying cabinet is a little over $10,000.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Any, whenever there's a public hearing, anyone has a right to speak against or for applying for this grant? Is there any comments from the public in this public hearing? Anyone else wants to speak on this? What's the wishes of the, well, I move to close the public hearing. Thank you. What's the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve the application.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Application was approved. All right. Okay, correspondence. Julie Bryan, Executive Director of Spark Imagination and Science Center.
The Spark Imagination Science Center is formerly known as the West Virginia Children's Discovery Museum.
Gotcha.
It's located at the Mountaineer Mall. They just sent a letter, "Thank you for approving Spark Imagination Science Center for the fiscal year 2016-17 grant. We are excited to use these funds for implementing our marker's space makers' space programs." If you have any questions about our program, please reach out to her, from Julie Bryan.
Thank you. Miss West Virginia Scholarship Organization, request for monetary donation.
We had received a request, and I asked you last week, and you said to go ahead and put it on the agenda. They're asking for $2,500 for the Miss West Virginia Scholarship Organization.
They had, they didn't make the deadline for the budget, but they submitted it anyway, and I told them, "Go ahead, we can always consider it." Any thoughts from the commissioners?
I believe in terms of economic development, it is a good thing. I would be in favor of our support.
I won't support it, not because the organization isn't qualified, I just feel that this opens the doors, and we, and I know it's very difficult in this budget time that we are maintaining, you know, a procedure, so I, I'm not going to support it because I think this opens up a can of worms.
I do believe it's economic development. However, I don't know what the carryover is yet, and I'm just not comfortable with approving anything additional until, until we find out what the carryover is. And so if it's all right, if you just move to table it until after July 1st sometime.
Move to table.
Second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. See what our carryover is and then take it from there.
Okay.
Okay. Morgantown Monongay Metropolitan Planning Organization Unified Planning Work Program for the fiscal year 2016-17. Every year, the Metropolitan Planning Organization puts together their work plan for the fiscal This was adopted on March 17th. It's really not so much for approval as for just notice, just procedural notice that this is the work plan.
Mr. Austin did call and ask if he needed to be here, and I said, "No, not necessarily." We're just making it a matter of record.
Just accepting the record is all we do at this point.
I mean, after reviewing, I think, and being at the meetings, I think the biggest thing here is that they're going to do the plan instead of hiring consultants, which is going to be done in-house, or this will be the first update to be performed solely by MPO's staff before it was done by, this is the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan.
Yeah. It's a good plan. Ben, I don't know, in other media, I don't know if you've had a copy of it or not, but if you'd like a copy, we got extras here. Okay, acceptance of that plan. All right, requisition number 20, Star City Tiff Project number one. This is the last and final distribution on the Star City Tiff Project. It was, it was received and accepted by the city council as the final, and I just heard Colleen told me that the mayor just called because I wanted to verify it. There are no, no further invoices coming. This is it. What do you want to do?
Move for approval.
Second for discussion.
Okay. I have a motion in second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess it's a concern that I have because last week we were informed that we were not receiving any more requisitions, and this is for how much?
The remainder of the contract, which is $146,000, I think, or something like that.
Well, with the retainage, it comes to $185,685.90.
So my concern is that, you know, the three of us, we're under an impression, and so I have, I'm leery of supporting it this time, even though I, you know, I don't believe there's any problems, but I think, I need some clarification. I mean, my concern is, and I think the two of you know, that Tiff District is very important for this community, and our Western Tiff, you know, has been doing exceptional, and we've been able to prove to the people why we've done it. I realize, though, that, you know, the cities have their own specific rules and regulations, and we have no control. And the reason why I say that is I was shocked to read in the paper a couple, two weeks ago on Ben's article, that the city of Morgantown is now planning a Tiff District Fairmont-Morgantown housing, I believe, situation. And as I look at it, I know we have requested information, I don't, have we received, we requested information three days, four days ago, and haven't received any information on it. And I have a concern that it meets the guidelines of what a Tiff is, and this is not the first situation in the city where we've had some questions, whether it be the Warner Project, the Worth District, the area downtown where they're building or fixing sidewalks. I just have some real concerns, and that's why, again, I realize that we do not have any control because it's in the city. I just have a major concern of having all these Tiff districts and how it affects, how we had to fight for ours, and we can prove our economic development. So it's more of a question and a concern, and especially this other district. I would, I would have hoped that the city, when talking about collaboration, would have contacted us, and that's why we have those city-county meetings, and instead, we read about it in the paper, and I have some real concerns about that, and I believe it's building a road on WVU property and then letting it out right by the...
Roundabout.
The roundabout. So again, I, this is the kind of situations we need to work together on, and I have some real questions and concerns, and I look forward to getting the material, and hopefully someone from the city will come to us and address how it meets and follows under the guidelines of a Tiff District.
I share your same concerns about your Class 1 and Class 2 Tiffs. And I don't think it's any secret that last year I brought the issue up before the County Commissioners Association, and we may bring it up again this year about the, discussed it in quite detail about the city's Class 1 and 2 does not have to go through the county. And the municipal league is very strong, and they get pretty much what they want from Charleston, unlike the counties. Counties have to struggle for every little thing. And one of, one of the issues was that the counties really have no say when Class 1 and Class 2 Tiffs are presented. They're not for building sidewalks. They're for creating jobs. They're creating jobs and creating sales tax. That's what it's all about. And just to use a Tiff, to just use a Tiff in order to do those things its government is supposed to do through their normal tax utilization is wrong. And it scares me that so many people that are opposed to Tiffs don't understand how they be, are supposed to be used, but they can point to projects that they've been misused. And when you have a positive program, the beauty about a Tiff, unlike Pennsylvania that we're competing with right across the line, Green County, Washington County, Fayette County, they actually give tax forgiveness. Tiff doesn't forgive any taxes. Taxes are still collected. It's just the future taxes goes to taking care of the public infrastructure that was needed for the project. That's why I prefer Tiffs over tax forgiveness. I just don't believe that you should forgive taxes. I just don't believe that you should forgive taxes for someone that's going to make money in the future. That's my philosophy, and we can debate that all day. But that, I share that same concern. Now, we, looking at the statute, Class 1 and Class 2 cities are to notify the county and the school board. And upon our request, they are to submit us all planned documents for our review so that we can make comment, if we choose to make comment, either to the city council or to the development office. Until we get the planned documents, we as a body can't respond. So, so after reviewing the, after reviewing the law, I asked Renetta to request those documents so we could review them. And have you heard anything?
Linda sent me, the city clerk sent me back an email that said that she was on vacation, but she was going to forward the email to
Oh, okay.
her assistant, and I haven't heard anything. That was Friday.
That was her response on Friday?
And I, I agree with your theory and principle. Now, the issue here, however, before us, is one that is within the parameters of the, of the contract.
You're correct.
Which I believe should be focused on. That's okay.
Sorry, I sort of got off. Because you started on that, starting about Tiffs.
Yes.
You know, I could talk about Tiffs all day long.
That's why you give me permission to kick you.
That's right. Thank you. The, now, this is, this is not a Class 1 or 2. This, this is through the county. And my concern, concern was also the same, which is why I reached out to the mayor to clarify that there, that this was, and our administrator went through, I think Bobby, you went through as well with the administrator, all the billings to make sure this wasn't any type of double billing or any, anything. It's, it's all the basic contract, and it was, it was really a mistake on the mayor's part because at the time he filled out the notice last week, he thought that was all the invoices. But the city council has, the Star City Council has approved it. They have also verified that it's just a completion of the contract.
Then that's fine. Thank you for clarifying that.
Chief makes yours a motion?
Motion's already been lit.
Yeah.
Well, that's right. Thank you.
That's okay.
Kick me a, second it. Okay, call for the question, thank you. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. Sorry. Okay. We dealt with that. Mecca Policy Board, but Chief Probst. You're on. Want to come on up and bring your, bring your cohort with you, too? You need to get on camera. Okay, we got here, the Mecca Policy Board recommends James Smith be named Director of the Monigay County Homeland Security Emergency Management Agency and Mecca 911. Any questions?
No, I, I think it's a good choice. I would move for the employment and approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Welcome.
Motion passed, thank you.
And hopefully, you won't ever have to deal with what the southern part of the state is dealing with. Yes.
Well, I'll be, I'll be asking for an update here in a few minutes when we get to officials. Okay. Thanks for coming. You know, you know, Jimmy, you're welcome all, all the time at all our meetings. Anything we can do, we'll definitely work, work for you. Thanks for the editorial, Mayor, I really appreciate that. Okay, unfinished business, discussion of file storage within the courthouse in Moore's Building. What do we know? I think Ed.
Yes.
Oh, yes, sir.
Well, I missed, don't please don't. I missed your last meeting, but you made a motion to move the file, or move the file shelving, but you did not say one thing about the files that are on the shelves.
No one knew anything about it.
Well, I spoke with Kathy about it, and she knew that I got a price from Allied moving to box them up and move them down the road and then have files moved for $2,100.
She said she knew that, but she had no idea where the bid was.
It was a bid that got called to me, and to do the ones in that backside back there was $2,100. Yeah, I spoke with her, but she wanted to get another price from this guy, Kenny, who's moving the files.
Oh, okay.
And I talked to him yesterday. He said he probably would get them to subcontract to move them, so he's not going to beat that price.
Okay.
Okay. So we need another motion to move those boxes and files up and move them in order to get that done. But if you see like on where it says that divorce room where they said, that was across from where the old circuit clerk's office was, in the back room, and you can see the checkmarks right there on the first floor, they're tore out and gone already. They're, they're on their way to be put back in to justice today. So the ones we're talking about right this minute are the last two on that first page that have files on them. And then the back page there, I talked with Kenny, and those are the ones that are over at the senior center. Now, after talking with Kathy, I also got a price on the ones that were downstairs to box up, but there was not a price on moving those file cabinets. And I was told that, you all told her in a meeting that she didn't have to worry about everything in the basement right now?
We, we said we want to make some headway on this other stuff part.
Okay.
It's not that, it's not that we want to forgot about, it's not we don't want it dealt with. It's just like, I had, I got the impression that they were feeling overwhelmed for whatever reason. And I was like, well, let's, you know, if you try to eat an elephant, you do it one bite at a time. So that's what I, that's what the response was, if you weren't sure what the response was. Let's take one bite, and then two, second bite, and a third bite, and get the job done. That doesn't mean that we don't want to deal with those.
So could we maybe have you all act on getting these files boxed up, and then we can move the other files down? Then that way, the whole first floor will be open for what we want to do.
What do you need in the form of a motion?
I need something to say that I can
I would move that we
You don't have to tell us, all you have to do is say, "Do it."
Yeah, we would allow the $2,100 to be spent to box and move those files that are on the cabinets.
Strongly support the second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 With that, I did
Motion passed.
And I did meet with the individuals from the state. They came down, and they are excited to be taking out as many of the documents that they can that are allowed to be preserved at the state level. So we'll see how much they end up taking.
A lot of those might be in the basement.
And that's another problem, is the condition of the files in the basement. In other words, I have not viewed these, I'll be honest, but I'm given to understand that the condition of the files in the basement, some of them are not as good as could be for historical preservation. So we'll have to see.
Well, they were fine 22 years ago when I was down there working for the clerk.
Was there not?
What would have happened to them?
I believe there was one flood that occurred, was there not?
No, we've never been flooded.
Not flooded, but I mean, I thought
The moisture maybe, you know, may have, might have wrinkled some pages and stuff, but as of flood damage, no, we're not.
Would it be permissible after, as you're doing this, when you see that you've accomplished the next goal, could you come back ahead of when the next step would be so we could keep this moving? So that way, we can
And get back, we'll get back with the state as well.
So we can keep this going.
You having a meeting next Wednesday?
Yes.
All right, we'll talk to you then.
That sounds great.
You sure you didn't, you sure you didn't watch the tape?
I appreciate, and we appreciate, we know what, how much work they've been doing and you're doing. And it is at such a cost to us, and I think the people need to understand that. Thank you.
Okay. Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Consideration of county administrative position?
As we're aware, we had an interim on the position that we have with Renetta McClure, and I would like to move at this time to drop the interim and have her chosen as the new county administrator. And I apologize, I forgot the amount of money that we had agreed on.
You're the one making the motion.
I know. At the salary that we agreed to.
Can I interject anything?
Yes. Yeah, that's right, yeah. I apologize, I had it written down, and then I lost it. It was 55, okay. I seem to have forgotten, for a price of 50, for a salary.
We're buying.
For a salary of $55,000.
Can we rewind that and erase that?
Yes, I move that we
Sort of erase that.
Okay, have it, yeah, okay, I'll try again. Okay, I move that we consider Renetta McClure for a salary of $55,000 as a new county administrator.
I will happily second that.
Sorry about that.
We have a motion and a second. I would just say that we were going through some difficult transition period. And you and Colleen as well, and a lot of Colleen's exceptional performance has had to do with your leadership. I know she's a good employee, but you displayed that leadership. And you tolerate Bobby pretty well.
And the three of us, that's good.
Well, I hadn't got to that. See, you keep cutting me short. But, but, you know, the other constitutional officers and, and the other staff is nothing compared to having to put up with the three of us.
And you have been a joy to work with, there's no question about that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. It's really not been that bad, Eldon. You made it seem like, it's really not been that bad.
I don't know. You haven't talked to my wife lately. Okay, any further unfinished business? Okay, hearing none, move on to new business. Consideration of architectural and engineering services for the renovation of the Courthouse Square project. Ms. Hawkins?
Yes, we, we reviewed and did come down to two candidates, and I do feel that both presented great things. However, it's my feeling personally that we would be better served by the Mills Group. And I think having the local people do the local work with the pride that's instilled would be a better choice.
I strongly second what the Commissioner stated.
I have a motion and a second. I would add that all of the applicants were exceptional in their ideas and plans. I would also add, because I've already got phone calls on it, that no decisions have been made. This is merely the selection of an architect to help us make the proper decisions to make it a safe area. We know we can't leave it the way it is. It scares me each and every day that someone, I probably shouldn't say that because we'll get someone tomorrow. Okay, everyone that walks on Courthouse Square, be very careful, please, until, until we get it fixed. But we've got, we had exceptional, and it was, it was not an easy choice. Especially we got down to the last, last two, the, the delay is really based on that it was such a difficult decision. So any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Please notify the parties that Mills Group was selected.
Sure.
Any further, the new business? Okay, reports from elected officials. Sheriff, you have anything for us?
I have two things. First of all, thanks for mentioning at the opening of your meeting about the folks in the southern part of the state and stuff, what they're going through now. And along that line, what we have done with the help of our assessor, my wonderful chief tax deputy and chief law officer deputy, we're going to have a collection site in our parking lot on Thursday, tomorrow, and Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And I want to thank Ron Snyder from Grandville for loaning us a cargo trailer to put there in our new Mecca Director for the other cargo trailer that's there. So we're asking anybody and to, that wants to contribute, to contribute. There is a list of things that they're specifically looking for now, which are basically cleaning supplies, regular bleach, I don't know why they want just regular bleach and not splashless bleach, but I think they're putting in spray bottles to
They're putting it in the wells.
Pour them down their wells and stuff, too. Rubber gloves, medical masks, baby food, clothes, anything that anybody wants to donate. But those are specifically some of the things that they're looking at now. Bug spray, snacks for diabetics, something we don't think about a lot. So those are some of the personal hygiene items, so those are some of the things that they're looking for currently. But again, you know, I want to thank Mark and Perry and Kelly for coordinating and putting all this together so that we can get this started. The other thing to have is, I know that last week we talked about the occupancy taxes, and you asked for an update whenever we had one. We have sent out the letter to the two hotels that are in arrears right now. What we found out was that the ones that, that we had called a couple of weeks ago, that three were a month behind, and one was three months behind. Those have been paid, so they are up to date. So we have the two that are outstanding right now. Kelly had a conversation with one of the ladies from Ramada Inn who said the timeframe was unreasonable. But our position is, and I think we've discussed this in this forum before, they've already collected the tax. If they chose to use it for something else, then that's on them. We set a deadline, I consulted with Phil Negro, the Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, before we sent the letter, asked him what he thought was a reasonable timeframe. We both agreed that that was a reasonable timeframe, and that he is prepared to take whatever action is necessary if they don't comply with what we've asked them to comply with and have everything paid by August 1st.
Thank you, Sheriff. I, I just want to add, add, or echo what Sheriff just said. The hotel occupancy tax is not paid by the hotel corporation. It is paid by the person or entity that is renting the room. The hotel corporation, the person that owns the hotel, is merely a collector, a trustee of those funds. That money should not be mixed in with any other account. It is tax money, it's tax money that is paid by the occupant that the hotel collects, and they have a fiduciary obligation to protect that money and turn it over to the levying body. It is not for remodeling their hotel. It is not their money. Now, owners of hotels might be screaming and hollering at me, but that's the law. Now, owners of hotels might be screaming and hollering at me, but that's the law. Okay, and, uh.
No, I want, I think you did it eloquently. I would not have been that nice, and I'm not going to be that nice, specifically because you're correct. This is money that was already collected. We dealt with this six months ago, and Sheriff, you were more than gracious of going out with Kelly to explain the situation. We gave them six months. I don't see too many people who you would be that gracious to if they didn't pay their taxes and go back to six months, and it needs to be paid. And it needs to be paid immediately. And I think the three of us are, are setting a precedent that we are adamant on this. We do not want to own a hotel. We just want them to pay their fair share, which has a direct effect on the Convention of Visitors Bureau, has a direct effect on the parks, and the people now are having to subsidize what wasn't being paid by them. So, I, that's how I would say it in a little harsher way. Thank you.
With regard to that, I did attend the Convention Bureau meeting on Thursday. This is part of my report anyway, but, uh, dealing with their cooperation that they intend to comply with the Aquatic Center, this was a matter of concern, and I did assure them, uh, what we and what our decision had been regarding this. So.
Thank you. Uh, Sheriff, you had something else you wanted to add?
Well, Stu Colley, Chief, uh, Kelly Paul reminded me of something that, uh, she handed me before. I'd have said I got three things to do. Uh, today we sent out a press release. I know we had talked about this again before, where we were having issues with, uh, people that were paying their taxes with E-checks and debit cards. Uh, once we went to credit card payments, we have, uh, since decided to eliminate accepting uh, E-checks and, uh, debit cards, because when somebody pays with a debit card, we don't know that those funds are actually on account with their bank. So, we have elected to make sure that when they're paid, if they're paid with a credit card, we know that that's already been proved, and, uh, we're going to get the money. The, um, two percent of two and a half percent, two and a half percent convenience fee that the credit card companies, uh, chart is still in effect. It's a minimum of two dollars, so, um, that still remains in effect. And the credit card company.
So, just. Credit cards.
Credit card specifically.
Or regular checks.
Or regular checks, yeah.
Or cash.
We prefer cash.
Because you know you have it yet.
But it's a nice option, and I don't know what the number is. I don't think we totaled everything wrong. Uh, the numbers of what we've actually been paid by credit card, but it's a substantial amount. And I think a lot of people that, uh, may not at that particular time have either the cash or the money in their bank account to pay their taxes, they, they normally will have, uh, a line of credit on their credit card that they can use, and a lot of people taking advantage of that. So, it's been beneficial for the county.
Thank you, Sheriff. Assessor Musi, what do we got, Mark?
Well, I just wanted to bring forth, uh, last week we talked about our satellite starting next week. I'll write a part of the schedule.
Would you all?
Thank you.
Today's. I got with Ben and submitted his stuff there, and he did an I-Straw piece of paper, but I wanted to make sure that you all had this, in case you get any phone calls. But we will start Wednesday. That's with the satellite. And as you can see, we got something going up through August, so we've added, we're up to twenty different dates now for our location for that satellite. And also, I'd like to echo what the sheriff was saying about our little, uh, collaboration with the flood relief, that it was, you know, very, their help and us working together was, you know, brought everything in. I'd like to give a little shout out to my administrative assistant, Victor McCourt, who's kind of handling everything from our assessor side to help me out with that. So, kudos to those guys too.
That's very good. Exceptional. Uh, thank you. Uh, Ron Snyder, Granville, what do you have?
Nothing, sir.
We have new, two new firemen.
Well, yes, that was after a rather lengthy debate. Yes, it was.
You don't want to breathe a song. You've heard enough. That's okay.
It was very unpleasant.
Yeah. Anything else going on in Granville?
Nothing I can think of.
Yeah, he keeps, he keeps building. I saw that. That's, that's good. That's positive. Uh, Jimmy Smith, what do we got for MECA nine-one-one?
We, uh, we've been in constant communication with the state EOC down in Charleston. Uh, we have daily briefings at eight AM and eight PM through conference calls. Um, we've been able to identify some locations in the state where they were really needing, and it was harder to get vehicles into it. So, uh, with the help of Town of Granville, Law and EMS, and our local health department, we were able to get, um, several trailer loads of supplies from WVU, their student organization, which had been collecting all week. And they've, uh, created a central, uh, point down at Stansberry Hall. So, we've been able to get supplies from them and get them down into Webster County, which was very hard hit. Um, the roads are almost impassable in most places down there, but we were able to get to the fire hall and, and get some of the supplies to them. We've also deployed our animal shelter trailer to Fayette County, along with a load of animal food that was needed down there. Uh, we have that set up now for them, and they're utilizing that. We also deployed our mobile air conditioning unit to a shelter in Fayette County. Um, this shelter is probably going to be open for a little while. It was without air conditioning. They asked if, uh, they could use our air conditioning unit, so we took that down, got that set up, and now they're utilizing that.
Good.
And we'll be working with the sheriff to identify a location to take his supplies once this is collected.
Very good. Thank you. Joe Kaler, give us a report on the celebration of America Fourth of July, please.
Um, all's going very well. Um, parade's coming together. The awards ceremony is being headed up by the four area rotary clubs. It's going to take place on the Courthouse Square this year, kind of, as I hear, going back to where it used to be. Um, that's all coming together really good. Looks like the weather's going to be absolutely perfect.
It is, it is.
So, everything's coming together very well. I want to congratulate Commissioner Bloom on not a viewing, but what I considered an event at the Met with Ageless Friends. It was absolutely fantastic. Um, saw a lot of the YouTube footage from West TV, and it looked great. People really, really enjoyed it. It was a moving experience and very well done.
Anyone wants to be in the parade, still can be, right?
Anyone that would like.
What time? So, if you could.
The lineup starts at four o'clock. Parade steps off at five. The awards ceremony immediate after that, and then right down to the riverfront for music and fireworks.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate Joe's, uh, leading that, uh, that committee. Thanks a lot, Joe.
You're welcome.
Let's see, did I miss anyone? Don't think so. Reports from Commissioner. Commissioner Bloom?
Uh, first of all, John Kennedy said it best that the sun does not always shine in West Virginia, but the people always do. And I think all three of us, we've heard tonight, is just the cooperation, not only statewide, but what this community has shown with the amount of, uh, people coming together, whether it be monetary, collecting items, or individually going down and helping out, and every different group, from WVU student body to, you know, uh, the people here in the county. So, I, I can't say enough about that. I have a question, and I was going to ask, if permissible, and we would have to get a ruling from our attorney, but I would like to see if we could buy five hundred dollars worth of donations that is needed and send it down there. Again, I know there's a question of the law, and I don't want to do anything wrong, but if, if permissible, could we do that? If we can't, then we'll, you know, see what else we can do. But I thought, I, I believe this community would want to do something, and if we had the problem that, you know, uh, they would have other communities do that. So, with your permission, I would like to move that if approved by our attorney and is permissible, we buy five hundred dollars worth of supplies needed for down the, for the work.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. Uh, Ron, do you want to say something?
We checked before Ash.
Okay.
On this, we were going to try to send a monetary donation down. He said absolutely not.
Okay.
Now, whether or not that's for the county, that's municipalities.
Well, it would be the same.
It would be the same. He said, no. Now, whether or not it would be, would supplies still?
Kelly?
The one thing I was going to say is, I know for a fact that the Clay County, uh, courthouse is completely underwater, and that the tax office lost all of their computers, their printer. They lost everything, and I was going to actually, uh, talk to the sheriff and have him ask you if we have old computers or old supplies, if we could send at least our old office equipment or anything that we're not using, that we would normally just store somewhere if we could send some of that to them, so.
Can I amend that to allow the supplies?
If you accept, then make your amendment, and then if you accept the amendment.
Okay, I'll amend the funding to look at, uh, extra supplies and additional supplies that we need to send out.
Excess supplies or equipment.
Yes. Second.
That's a good idea.
Second. Okay, uh, so we'll look into the supply, supply situation.
Sure.
The, the main thing on, on, on the excess supplies and/or any additional supplies, uh, is let's really focus on what they need.
Yes.
What is not being given.
Okay.
You know, Clorox, to me, you can go up to Sam's Club and buy four or five gallons of Clorox for little or no money, but if everyone does that, then they might need something else. You know, so, so, uh, that's, that's all I'd say. I think it's a, it's a great idea. Uh, uh, make, make sure for the additional five hundred, we get the, get it, uh, okay. And that's not monetary.
Right.
As Ron pointed out, it's, it's just for, uh, uh, additional supplies that we might have. Yes, for a few.
I would just add to that, whatever somebody's able to give in supplies, if it's a, if it's computer equipment, then we document the brand name, model, and serial number, so we know that it's been taken out of our.
Okay, sure.
You accept that?
I, I accept that. It's a friendly.
Yes.
Then accept it. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
Uh, second thing, I know that you had, I had asked that this be brought up, and I know you would too. We received a communication from the County Commission of Wood County and a letter, and I'm asking that we put it on a, uh, agenda at a later time. Well, not later, but in the near future. Uh, they are requesting, they're saying it is our belief that our financial problems could be solved if we could acquire legislation that would allow counties the ability to enact home rule without any strings attached, as the municipalities currently have. The ability to impose a one percent sales tax for counties would put us on equal standing with the municipalities. And I'd just like to put that on a work session so we can discuss it. And also at the time, since it'd be a public work session, if people showed up and voiced their support or negativity, if that's okay with you.
I'm assuming we're discussing home rule, not.
Yes.
Percentages and expressions.
No, exactly.
So, it's understood.
Discuss the letter.
Yes.
Yeah. Discuss the letter that they had asked for. Okay.
Because what their intent to do may not be our intent
Exactly.
of what we anticipate a home rule could be.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But I like the idea where it says without any strings attached. That's the key to me. And that is it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Uh, both Commissioner Bloom and I, last, uh, last Wednesday evening, uh, attended the unveiling of the GIS mapping. Uh, it was a very good and informative session given by Mike Paul. I actually, yesterday, then drove to Wadestown to speak to Blue Mountain and tell them how happy we were with the images that I saw. I, I am a map guy, and I really liked that. Along the way, I also stopped at Mason Dixon Park. Uh, Mason Dixon Park seems to be in good status. Uh, there was no, um, no immediate problems reported there. On Thursday, um, was the last final council circle for day camp, so I was at Camp Muffly there. And the jobs that, uh, Bobby's crew have done up there, I really appreciate it. I'll be there, uh, in a few weeks for older camp. Uh, but it's really, uh, the parks are looking good. I, I have yet to make it up. I will go ahead and, and visit our last at Chestnut Ridge. Uh, I did, uh, Friday represent commission at the Botanical Gardens. Uh, they had their open house for the new learning center. It is a work in progress, but it is something that really, uh, if you've not been to the Botanical Gardens, uh, just for a place to walk your, you know, walk, walk your dog. It is absolutely spectacular. Uh, you know, they, George Longneckar has done just a wonderful job. He has stepped down. Uh, there is a new director, but, uh, and I did meet the director, but, uh, it's, it's, it's something that is really a jewel in the community. Um, also, um, Monday, we did, uh, have the, uh, WVU Health Needs Assessment, which is continuing. Uh, this is community individuals are beginning together to identify how, uh, they, I believe they have to do this once every three years. Uh, I've been representing commission for that. And also, the Solid Waste Authority meeting was that evening, and they are, they are not dormant. They are still looking at, uh, what they may be able to do for the community, but most of the financials have, uh, have been taken care of. You know, there were the grants that they had to send back and the like, so.
All right. Thank you. Um, I, I want to again thank both commissioners for, uh, covering for me, uh, while I'm taking care of my wife and actually taking care of myself now. Uh, I, I pulled something in my neck, and I can't figure out what it is. I had neck, uh, surgery and have pleats in my neck from years past, so they don't know whether it's related to that or not. But, uh, I do appreciate your attendance and, and, uh, and explanation as to why I can't make some of these things. Spent most of my time, uh, in doctor's appointments and therapy appointments with my wife, but she's doing much better. Uh, she's coming along well. Uh, I would, uh, I would point out that she, she wanted to go to her professional conference in Lewis County. So, we were in Lewis County when it poured down the rain. I mean, it was, if you ever, if you're a Bible person, you ever read the story of Noah, you really expect it was coming, because it was pouring constantly. And, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot, a lot of roads were blocked in Lewis County. People couldn't get in and out until it subsided some. Uh, I would point out that from my, uh, uh, I've seen, received emails from my colleagues from the, um, County Leadership Institute, all of them throughout the United States, uh, sending their prayers and thoughts from the twenty-one other states. Uh, they recognize how devastating this is for, for our state, so, uh, I appreciate, uh, their concern. Uh, I hope I am as diligent to watch what's going on in their states as well. Um, the, uh, you made a good point about the home rule. I think that it, the aspect of the letter from Wood County, when I read it, was that counties are, are getting rather frustrated when, uh, municipalities are, uh, amassing funds, but they're only servicing a small part of the community. And I think that's what that reflects. Uh, I, I, I think we should discuss it further. I would add, uh, just so if anyone's talking about the story right now, that, uh, the County Commissioner Association has, continues to have that on their legislative agenda to analyze and discuss. And I think we've even discussed it with the Association of Counties and some of their board meetings, but that, that is something on their agenda. The difficulty, as Commissioner Hawkins pointed out, is identifying what home rule is, because compared to the other, uh, the other forty-nine states, uh, it, it differs with, with every state, and sometimes it differs two or three times within the same state. But I do think that's positive. I was very, I was very, uh, sad to miss the GIS, uh. Uh, I, I've played with a little bit on, on the commu- computer when I had time, thirty minutes, I got to look at it. But I used to teach rap, map reading in, in the military.
Yep.
In the desert. You can actually teach map reading in the desert. And I did that with the Third Armored Cavalry Regiment. So, I was, uh.
It's, it's phenomenal. I mean, we've only scratched, we've only scratched the surface.
Even I am, even I understood.
It is, the, the power of this, uh, of having this base, uh, map is just tremendous, and all the things that could be done, uh, that, that we have, like you said, we haven't even scratched the surface. You know, one, one of the big concerns with, uh, oil fracking is where the fracking's going. You know, one, one of the big concerns with, uh, oil fracking is where the fracking's going, where it's reading, reaching. Well, you could put a layer, you could put a layer on that, show exactly where all the gas wells are and where the pipes go and where, where they start and where they end. There's all kinds of things you could do. Abandon coal mines. For some reason, I keep thinking underground. Uh, aban, abandoned coal mines. We've got abandoned coal mines all around here. We've got subsidence problems. You could do a layer on all the old coal mines that's been abandoned, that goes back sometime into, to the early nineteen hundreds, that, uh, were closed back then. And, uh, the people may have told us, younger people, where those mines are, but most people have forgotten. But you could go back and you could dig that out of the old, uh, Bureau of Mines records. So I was, I, I was very pleased that's under, uh, uh, moving forward. And I very much appreciate your all attendance at that. I really don't have anything else. Is there anything else that, uh, anyone needs to discuss? Hearing none, nothing?
Move for Chairman?
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.